Number four is aware as well.
So you said 90 seconds?
Is that what you just said?
I put them in the map door four.
Okay, perfect.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Should I test the mic? Test one?
Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
There for me, yeah, yep.
Not the preamble.
Perfect.
Is the audio working yet? Is audio okay? Not yet?
Hopefully 30 seconds.
We can hear perfectly online.
You can hear online now?
Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay. Okay. I'm told we have audio now. Welcome to our special council meeting of October 9th, 2024. The meeting has been called for the following specific purpose: To discuss compassionate intervention programs. Under council meeting rules, no other business can be considered at this special meeting. And thank you, council, for the indulgence of having this special meeting. It is Wednesday at time. We normally have meetings. Notice that we had some space available today. And we have a big city mayor's meeting on this topic next week. I certainly have strong sentiments on this topic, but I thought it would be an opportunity for council to share their perspectives as well. So we have everyone's perspectives on the matter. And Councilor Santos will be representing me at that meeting of the big city mayors on next week. So all members verify we have a councilor in the chamber. We've got Councilor Singh, Councilor Santos, Councilor Plessy, Councilor Braw, Councilor Basante, and online to the clerk.
Through Mayor Brown, we have Councilor Keenan, Councilor Maderos, Councilor Power, and Councilor Tour, online.
Perfect. We are at item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Or? Uh, Councilor Plessy?
No, no. I have it. Just a question about the agenda.
Question about the agenda, okay.
Was the correspondence filed by Peel Paramedics Union added to the agenda as of yet?
Through Mayor Brown, the, it hasn't been added onto the agenda. It will be included in the post-agenda, so it will be part of the public record.
Okay.
And that was my only update.
Okay.
From the clerk was that we did receive that correspondence. And we have it available to share online.
Perfect.
Under delegations and correspondence when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on that same note, I see the police sent in a potential delegation today and are in the building. So can we, do we need to add them to the agenda?
As a delegation.
A delegation? Procedurally, do we need to?
We can do that.
Okay.
Call them forward when the delegation's, there is a possible delegation.
Okay, so we can just call them forward, okay.
So we can.
Okay, that works. Okay, motion moved by Councilor Santos, seconded by Councilor Braw. All those in favor? Motion carries. We're now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? For any matter to be considered on today's agenda. Seeing none, the clerk will so note in the meeting minutes. For the purpose of the delegations and discussion, I think it'd be helpful if we actually put the motion on the screen.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And what I'm going to suggest for a format, if council's agreeable, if council members want to make suggestions, comments, ask questions, we do that first, and then we hear from the delegates afterwards. Because there may be amendments from members of council that may speak to what the delegates are going to share. So we're putting the motion on the screen.
Can we scroll forward to the number four portion?
I read it. Can I speak to the motion?
So I have on the board, Councilor Plessy, Santos, and Tour. Was that the correct order of the hands? Okay. Uh, Councilor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, looked at the motion that you provided, and I've been struggling with this a little bit, because when it comes down to it, it's forcing somebody to, to do something they may not want to do. They may not have the capacity or capability to make those choices also. I've, since being elected representative, I've had the opportunity to tour, look at, and dive into mental health and addictions. And I can honestly say today that there's no government body that does or treats addictions well at all. It's, it's a failed, I guess you could say it's an experiment. The one even on McLaughlin Road. Anybody that has an addiction, they go into a cold glass bubble where there's no, no real truly support service that, that they actually need, require. The only thing that has ever helped addiction that's proven is, is a 12-step program. And, you know, if somebody was struggling with, with addiction, wanted to get help today and phoned the government mental health and addiction phone number for the one on McLaughlin Road, their response, McLaughlin Road's response is, "We'll call you back when we have availability." And so it's, I, I can see that we're asking for the province to, to step up and help, but I don't know what they're going to do with, and it's not this government or party. It's, it's, it's been like this for, for a long time. Only thing that actually, and I'd love, I've seen numbers, and I'd like to get probably more of the numbers from the private sector, but the 30-day programs at a minimum help more certainly than, I think it's 72 hours sometimes in, in the McLaughlin Road. So this is, this is a tough one. If the province is, is going to step up, change, and do something, or even pull in the private sector to help, I, I think that, you know, that, that could work, but I don't know if, like, there's no funding. There's not enough funding, I think, available for them to actually do that. Private sector facilities are in the twenties and thirties of thousands, thousands of dollars for, for patients when. So it's, it's a tough one. It hits home because I've been through, I've, I've been dealing with, with this stuff and trying to, trying to help as much as possible with, with the, with the people from HIV/AIDS and addictions, Peel, and have had countless number of sit-down discussions with them, been to facilities that now the region run, and. So I, I certainly, my heart goes out to all these people that have disease. And I think, you know, the biggest stigma of, of addictions is a lot of people still think that you can rub some dirt in it and, or change, change somebody's mind that has, has an addiction. And they don't actually realize that an addiction is a disease, like cancer, like HIV, like so many other diseases out there. It's not a choice, it's a disease. It's not a choice, it's a disease. We've had members of council at the regional table across from me say it's not a disease. And if a politician doesn't know that, you know, this is, it's a disease, and it's not a pill that can be provided to treat, to cure, that's unfortunate. I think we, as it affects us greatly, not only the city of Brampton, surrounding municipalities, the region of Peel, I think it's important to see what we can do as the region and the city. So I have asked for a few amendments circling around the ability to hopefully provide greater nasal naloxone kits. I'm not sure what that means or where we're allowed to, what we're allowed to get involved with. I think there was discussions about trying to get them into our community centers, but I've never had that discussion. I'd also like to see if we can encourage all surrounding municipality or regions, our commissioner heads, and medical officers of health to conduct a roundtable and to come back with some opportunities, especially around the community safety wellbeing plan, to see if there's more opportunities, more things that we can do as a municipality. And then getting this out there to the Minister of Health and Mental Health Addictions, Michael Tobolo, and surrounding neighborhoods to see if we can garner support from them as well. So those are my amendments to your motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Santos?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As I shared at the press conference last week, at the end of the day, this is about the health and safety of the individual and also the public at large. And in agreement with councillor Plessey about addictions being a disease, it is slightly different than cancer in that many of those with mental health and addictions issues like this are also a danger, not just to themselves, but to the public. And, you know, part of the reason why I'm attending the OBCM on behalf of Mayor Brown next week is because of my experience in the community in which I serve, where there has been a significant amount of mental health addictions issues, many of whom are living in encampments along the Etobicoke Creek Trail. And in dealing with that issue firsthand as a councillor, struggling with figuring out, you know, what to do when fentanyl is found in tents and encampments, and police coming back regularly in situations like that, security staff at risk, park staff at risk on a regular basis because there are, in fact, people with significant and severe mental health and addictions issues who are unfortunately homeless and in encampments. And you take a look at the statistics from Peel outreach, and more often than not, quite regularly, many of these folks are denying support, and they are rejecting help being offered from various staff, whether that's security, or police, or fire, or the region of Peel. And I'm going to read a story because Peel Police provided this story of an individual who's homeless. Fifty-year-old man of no fixed address with well-documented mental health and addiction issues and nearly sixty police occurrences dating back to 2001. The individual is known to have paranoid delusions, has been apprehended under the Mental Health Act and found in possession of illegal substances, including crystal meth. Most recently, he was arrested for possession of a weapon for a dangerous purpose adjacent to a community park. In addition to knives, methamphetamine was located during this arrest. In 2023, he was arrested for possession of a weapon for a dangerous purpose after showing a knife to a clerk that would not provide him with an item, and assault with a weapon for attempting to strike a security guard with a metal bar when asked to leave a premises. Prior to this, the man was charged with assault with a weapon after attempting to strike a random passerby with a knife, committed robbery at local convenience stores while in possession of a knife, was arrested for arson for lighting a fire in a multi-residential building, and was arrested for aggravated assault after stabbing an individual while engaged in an altercation. In addition, he has been arrested for the suspect of multiple mischief to property offenses, theft, break-and-enter, bail violations, and breach of probation, liquor act offenses, and impaired operation of a motor vehicle. Many of the individual's charges have been withdrawn, presumably due to his mental state. Where convictions have been made, they have resulted in time served or probation orders, which are routinely violated. And so ultimately, and there are many cases like this where it's clear that the person may be unable to make decisions on their own and causing further harm, not just to themselves, but to the public at large. In reaching out to the Peel paramedics' union and Peel paramedics, I had also asked them, you know, what they thought about this. And they filed correspondence for this meeting today, and I'll ask the clerk to put it up now so that we can refer to it. And because they took the time, short time, to respond on this matter and provide their feedback and support, I wanted to read it out loud. Dear Mayor Brown and Brampton Council, I'm writing on behalf of the nine hundred paramedics that serve the region of Peel. Recent discussions about the creation of a mandatory treatment regime for people suffering repeated overdoses or recurrent mental health crisis could save lives if implemented properly. Paramedics, police officers, and firefighters respond to hundreds of calls for service for these individuals. And in our current system, paramedic care is often the highest level of medical care these folks get before declining transportation. They even reject transportation to the hospital. While the Mental Health Act allows for the apprehension of a patient who is a threat to themselves or others, or who cannot take care for themselves, the act does not permit detention for chronic situations once the danger is removed. Put more bluntly, for overdose patients, once the naloxone wakes them up, they are free to walk away. And so the story goes. The result can be multiple calls to the same individual, like the individual I just referenced, for the same problem in the same day. Beyond being frustrating, this is a life-threatening situation for the patient. Additional tools are needed to support folks like this. And that's what this is about, which is why I wholeheartedly, from my personal experience as a councillor dealing with this situation, in addition to talking to various stakeholders, including paramedics and the police, folks, this is not about choosing one thing over the other. This is about adding something new to our tool bill to deal with this crisis that is faced by municipalities across the entire country, and making sure that we save lives because the status quo of just relying on voluntary treatment is doing nothing to help severe cases like this. And in fact, it's causing a lot more strain on public safety, as well as strain to our first responders. And so on that note, because Peel paramedics sent in their correspondence, I just wanted to make a couple of amendments. And actually councillor Plessey made that one already, so me, yes, so a couple amendments. So to number two, that the pilot project be based on British Columbia model of compassionate treatment for those in crisis threatening their own life, and include stakeholders such as Peel paramedics, because Peel paramedics has asked to be part of the process in developing the pilot, so and include stakeholders such as Peel paramedics and other first responders and medical professionals. And then the other piece in this, and I know councillor Plessey added that we forward this, councillor Plessey, to local MPPs and MPs and ministers?
I added that in for, like, just through voice.
Okay, so, okay, so I think that we should also add that this be immediately, if and when passed by this council, immediately forwarded to the region of Peel as part of the discussion tomorrow. And that we should also forward the correspondence from Peel paramedics and the delegation from Peel Regional Police today. I'd be happy to second the motion, Mayor Brown.
Councillor Tour, you're next up.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, agree with my colleagues here too. I think councillor Santos has added a few things on to the motion. The only thing I would add on additionally to this, you know, also based on the feedback from the Peel paramedics' union through the correspondence that they sent us, I think it is also important to stress on the fact that our existing health system, we need to continue our advocacy to support, you know, tackling the challenges that we have with our hospitals. So, you know, with a pilot project like this, which I fully support, I think it is much needed to try a new approach to deal with this issue. At the same time, we need to see that better investment in our healthcare system, in our hospitals, the completion of the Peel Memorial, and a future hospital as well in the city. I think that would be very important because, you know, just in that letter that was sent to us by the Peel paramedics' union, there is no point in trying out the pilot if, you know, treatment is going to continue in the hallways of our hospitals, or if, you know, our patients aren't treated with dignity when we bring them in. You know, it is crucial to the success of the pilot. So, long story short, if I could just add that, you know, we continue our advocacy on the completion of Peel Memorial and further investments in our healthcare system and hospitals in the city of Brampton.
Great amendments, councillor Tour, thank you for that. I don't see other councillors on the board, and so I'll take this opportunity as chair to speak to this. You know, I read newspapers at least every morning, and as issues are challenging our country, I follow them. And this has been an issue that I have been following closely and struggled with the fact that I really felt that it was getting worse, and we did not have an answer of how to respond. The number for overdose fatalities stands at twenty-two a day in Canada. It's happening in plain sight, on our streets and in our parks, quite often in homeless encampments, where we've almost grown numb to it, you turn the other way. And the number of fatalities happening on an annual level in any other space would be a national tragedy, but it hasn't been on the front pages. You know, our most famous resident, the late premier Bill Davis, always said, "There's no monopoly on a good idea," and I've repeated those words quite often. And so as I looked at this struggle we're having, I thought of his words, and how is that relevant here? Well, the example is, in other parts of the world, they've found a better way to treat addictions. And we have the responsibility, knowing that the current approach is broken, the status quo is broken. Accepting twenty-two deaths a day in Canada is broken. Recognizing the status quo is broken, where else have they found a way to deal with this addiction crisis? The prevalence of opioids in our cities is a staggering threat. It is more the level of toxicity, the nine out of ten opioid overdoses related to fentanyl, so dangerous, having that product in more abundance in our parks and streets, it's horrifying. And you look what they did in Sweden and Portugal, where they've had tremendous results with involuntary treatment. And one of the champions of this has been our mental health minister, Michael Tobolo, who I believe is incredibly thoughtful and incredibly well researched, I'm a big fan of his. And the way he describes it is compassionate intervention. So that's the word I've been using to describe this. I want us to be more ambitious. I don't want us to settle for a status quo that we know is inhumane. To allow people to die in encampments is inhumane. And we run a pilot project here based on what they're doing elsewhere. If it works, we save lives. If it doesn't work, we go back to the drawing board. And for what really shifted things for me is, out in British Columbia, where they're on the forefront of this addictions crisis, the opposition to this European model was the incumbent government, the NDP government. And David Albey, the premier of British Columbia, announced that he was wrong, that he was bringing in legislation to bring this in to BC, saying that he had had a physician lead, a peer review of best practices, and after seeing the data, he wanted BC to be a leader on this with this compassionate intervention. And what they're doing in BC, his words struck me, is he said, "This is one tool in the toolkit to deal with the addictions crisis. It is not compassionate intervention in isolation." He said, "With this must come investments in treatment beds." And so I hope if we prod the provincial government to do this, it would be in a manner similar to what they're doing in BC. It is not in isolation, if this new tool is brought in, there are strict checks and accountability. What's been suggested out West is to have not only the first responder who arrives on the scene recognizing there's someone in crisis, but you would actually have physicians, possibly two physicians, verify this is life-threatening. And it's not just life-threatening to the individual in crisis. When we hear from the police, we'll hear about the number of related criminal co-defenses. I look at a number of in the last two years, and I think it was nine thousand related criminal co-defenses. We had one individual that had fifty-three mental health apprehensions, terrorizing the community. Hundred and fifty-six thousand police hours. We have police that can't respond to home invasions. We're at a point where we're struggling to respond to intimate partner violence calls. Our police, this is, I want our police doing police work. Thirty thousand hours in the hospital in the last two years, thirty thousand hours in the hospital? When we've got serious public safety threats that I want our police to be able to work at? You look at the correspondence from the paramedics, how this has changed their job description, you look at the emergency department numbers, it's harrowing. The same old approach can't continue. And then I read the story about Brianna McDonald, thirteen years old, in British Columbia. And her parents said, "Our daughter is spiraling out of control. She doesn't realize that she needs treatment, but she desperately needs treatment. We're worried we're going to lose her." And they got turned down. They weren't able to offer their daughter treatment because she was, they said that she has to consent. They said she doesn't have the capacity to consent, and she died of an overdose in a homeless encampment. And when I, last week, we had a press conference with the deputy mayor and councillor Santos. And thank you councillor Santos for how active you've been on how we deal with this encampment issue in Brampton, you've been so vocal on this. They had a call-in on ten-ten radio. And what I was really surprised by was the number of call-ins that talked about parents who shared stories. This is the story from British Columbia about losing a child was not an isolated incident. There was examples being shared here in the GT. Actually, Mississauga councillor DePica Demaro was one of the people that called in and illustrated an example of her constituents where parents lost a child. The severity of the drugs that are on the street right now are different than when we were young. They're more of a severe threat. And so when we face a threat in our communities, let's look at best practices. Let's look outside the box. And if this is working in New Brunswick, and it's going to work in British Columbia, and it can work in Europe, why not give it a try? And that's my hope, to spark this conversation today in the city, tomorrow at the region, next week with the big city mayors. And I've spoken to a lot of mayors who, whether it's the mayor of Guelph, or Windsor, or Brantford, or Barry, who are all highlighting similar challenges. And of course, there was a tragedy in the summer in Kingston, the list just goes on. This is not a unique problem to Brampton, but Brampton has been ahead of the curve at always suggesting solutions. And what's been encouraging, since we had that press conference, a lot more conversation in the last five days about this. The Globe and Mail did an opinion piece, Marcus Key, and referenced this topic that Brampton had raised. This can save lives, and I think it's worth us taking a hard look at. That's the reason that I've brought you here today for the special council meeting, but we can always benefit from additional perspectives. And I'm grateful that we have some folks here today that want to delegate. The first request we have here is from the Peel Police, and, you know, I've had a lot of conversations. of conversations with our chief and deputies about this. They're the ones who share the data with me in terms of how it's changed their work, but I think it'd be helpful for all of council to hear the data that I've got to see as a police board member about how this has really shifted police resources. So on that note, if the representatives from the Peel police could come forward and share your position, name, and title, and then if there are additional members of the audience who want to delegate, we will get to you next.
Great, thank you for the invitation to come forward. My name is John Versluis. I'm the manager of our Community Safety and Wellbeing Services Unit, operating in a civilian capacity. And again, thank you for inviting me here today to discuss an issue that is at the forefront of the community's wellbeing, which is the rising need for mental health and addiction support, and the impact that it has on the safety and wellbeing of our communities. Across Peel region, our officers have and continue to encounter a steady increase in mental health-related incidents. And I want to emphasize, this is not unique to our community, but the numbers we face here are indeed significant. Since 2020, Peel regional police, sorry, since 2020, calls to Peel regional police related to mental health and addiction crisis have increased by 25%. To put this in perspective, from the beginning of 2020 to June of this year, police responded to nearly 34,000 mental health and addiction-specific calls. And while mental health and addiction incidents officially only account for a small fraction of police calls, Canadian research suggests that the actual call volume that are driven by underlying mental health and conditions is much more significant. So those 34,000 mental health calls are just official statistics and are really just the tip of the iceberg in terms of how mental health affects our response model. The ripple effect on our resources and the safety and wellbeings of our community is substantial. To illustrate the impact, officers have dedicated over 136 hours to mental health calls and addiction calls over the past two and a half years. This equates to more than 11,300 frontline shifts and over $10 million in operational costs, and to the mayor's point, takes our officers away from the job that they've been hired to do. This time and energy that our officers dedicate every day to ensure that those in crisis receive the care and attention they need, and again, only represents that small sample of mental health and addiction calls. Among the nearly 8,200 individuals who have experienced at least one mental health incident during the past two and a half years, a significant portion also had additional non-mental health interactions with our service, illustrating that mental health and addiction concerns often underlie a broader spectrum of police interactions. One of the most challenging aspects of a response is the repeat nature of these occurrences. Approximately 1,754 individuals in Peel have been apprehended multiple times under the Mental Health Act, just going back to the start of 2022. We see this revolving door effect repeatedly, with a small number of individuals representing a significant number of incidents. Some, again, as was mentioned earlier, requiring as many as 53 separate apprehensions in just a few short years. Since 2022, Peel regional police have also executed 482 Form 47 orders under the Mental Health Act for individuals who failed to adhere to community treatment order requirements to ensure that they gain access to the care they need. These interactions not only put a strain on police resources, they represent lives where the cycle of crisis continues unchecked. Each encounter is an opportunity, but also a reminder that we need systemic solutions to address these complex needs in a way that is compassionate and just doesn't put another Band-Aid on the solution. So to build on the conversation earlier, agree that there's broader system capacity issues here that need to be very much addressed in tandem. Despite these challenges, there are interventions that are currently making a difference. For example, our mobile crisis rapid response teams, which are partnerships with community-based crisis workers, are vital assets in deescalating these situations and reducing the number of apprehensions by offering immediate support to trained professionals. Some of you will also be aware that earlier in the year, we launched a community crisis rapid response team, which is a partnership with Canadian Mental Health Association, Punjabi Community Health Services, and Roots Community Services, to redirect calls to police that don't require a police response. So again, another effective intervention that's been very much driven by our partners. I'll also add that in our Community Safety and Wellbeing Services Unit, we have a robust program that enables our officers to refer individuals in need of support to our CSWB service resources, so that our officers can follow up, understand their challenges, and connect them to community-based supports that are best positioned to meet their needs. This is in addition to the Peel Situation Table, which provides wraparound supports to individuals in our community that are at an acutely elevated risk of harm to themselves or others. These programs are critical and have demonstrated many positive outcomes, including fewer unnecessary interactions with police, but they're only one part of the solution. With respect to our mental health programs in particular, we cannot overstate the importance of partnership between police and community-based crisis resources, but these initiatives also need ongoing support and investment to expand and address the increasing demand that we're experiencing. And I believe it's about one in five calls that are of mental health in nature that we're actually able to dispatch one of these crisis teams to. So this is an area where we do need continued investment and support. Turning our focus to overdose incidents, the numbers reflect another stark reality. Between January 2022 and June 2024, Peel police responded to over 1,800 overdoses, 328 of which were tragically fatal. Many of these fatalities involved individuals with prior overdose incidents, underscoring the urgent need for early and sustained intervention. Our officers every day witness the devastating impacts of addiction in our community. These situations call both for compassion and collaboration with health agencies to address root causes and the underlying drivers of addiction in our community. Which brings me to the purpose of today's meeting, which is to express that Peel regional police supports the introduction of involuntary treatment legislation in Ontario as an additional tool in the tool belt to ensure the safety of individuals in our communities where appropriate and where the criteria for this program are met. This would allow, under exceptional circumstances, for individuals who due to severe mental illness or addiction, who pose a significant risk to public safety, to receive the care they need after all voluntary treatment and other support measures have been exhausted. We recognize that some individuals face barriers preventing them from seeking the necessary care, which leaves them in vulnerable situations and escalates risk of harm to themselves and others. This legislation would provide a pathway to ensure that individuals most in need receive timely support when all other options have been fully exhausted and utilized. Involuntary treatment is an important measure to prevent critical incidents that do impact the safety and wellbeing of the community. This legislation would also assist police services and other social and health service partners to more effectively allocate resources to proactive preventative efforts in order to address the root causes of reoccurring crisis and to foster a safer and more compassionate community. I'll just highlight that this approach aligns with Peel regional police's commitment to resource optimization and preventive community-focused policing. We believe that this legislation can help address the underlying causes of reoccurring crisis and promote the safety of our region and the wellbeing of the individuals we serve every day. I do want to reemphasize, though, that our goal is always to work towards a sustainable support system where individuals receive the help they need before their crisis escalates to the need for a police, paramedic, or other first responder response. I will also emphasize that Peel regional police remains committed to our community safety and wellbeing approach, which prioritizes proactive upstream solutions by addressing health and social needs in collaboration with community partners. While preventative and voluntary treatment options will always be our top priority, involuntary treatment legislation would provide a necessary option to those individuals that represent a chronic risk to the safety of the public and themselves under exceptional circumstances. We believe in a community where those in crisis receive care before escalation, where support is accessible, and where every individual receives the treatment they need. Together, we can build a safer, healthier Peel region. Thank you.
Are there any questions, councillor Santos?
Thank you for you, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for that very thorough delegation. I know that you're not able to delegate tomorrow, so wondering if we could take your remarks, and if I could just email it to my colleagues at the region, or file it as correspondence at the region for tomorrow?
We'd be happy to provide that.
Yeah, that would be great, because those were, it summarized everything beautifully. And essentially, you shared all the different things that we are trying to do in an upstream, preventative way, voluntary way, providing the support, whether that's through MCERT or CERT, or Community Safety Wellbeing Table. But there is the one piece that's missing, which is what do we do for the most severe cases, where they can't make decisions on their own and they are a threat to public safety? And that's what this is about. So thank you for that incredible delegation. Please put it in writing if we could, and so that we could forward it to the region as correspondence.
We both. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you for your perspective today, grateful to have put on the record the amount of police resources that this utilizes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other residents that wish to delegate today? Seeing none. We have the motion, oh, actually, we need a motion to receive the delegation. So a motion moved by councillor Sings, seconded by councillor Visante to receive the delegation from PRP. All those in favor? Motion approved. Okay, this takes us to our motion on compassionate intervention. Okay. Are there any other additional amendments that members of council wish? Okay. Why don't I suggest that we have this motion moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor Visante, as our rep on AMO? I know we can raise this at the AMO board as well. I don't see any other discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other questions or comments? No, there is not. Public question period. Any other public questions? Seeing none, confirming bylaw. The confirming bylaw, I have a motion moved by councillor Plessy, seconded by councillor Browder, approve the confirming bylaw to confirm proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our last business is item eight, adjournment. Our next scheduled meeting is council on October 16th. I have a motion moved by councillor Sings, seconded by councillor Visante to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries.